They had to follow, and I'm trying to find them again, and I can't. This is not the rules.
Which address was that?
The Clearwater Place.
I'm sure it was going to be.
And you're good to go whenever you're ready.
Okay. It being six thirty on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, I'll bring this meeting of the zoning board of adjustments for November to order. Karen, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Gail Ober.
Here.
Roland Mayhew.
Yeah.
Michael Foot.
Yeah.
Jane LaRoche.
Here.
Marsha Hayward.
Here.
And absent notification is Stephen Bogert, and Mike Delavecchia is stuck at work, so he's.
He either will or he won't be here.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, he doesn't think he will be.
And staff, Dean.
We have Dean Trefevlin, Plating Director, and Karen Centauri, Recording Secretary.
Okay. At this point in time, I will ask both of our alternates to be full-voting members of this board tonight. I'm grateful you're here.
Yes.
And welcome to all of you. First order of business is I'll accept a motion for the minutes of the meeting of ten eighteen twenty-one.
I'm moving. Accept the minutes for the meeting of ten eighteen twenty-one as written.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here, so I'm not going to vote on that.
Okay, so you're an abstention?
I'm an abstention.
Okay, I just, it was so quick.
Oh, goodness.
Okay, I see a lot of people out in the audience tonight, and I just want to say one thing. Tonight, we are hearing, and I see some familiar faces. We are scheduled to have, decide whether or not we're going to rehear our third item on the agenda tonight, which has to do with thirty-three Clearwater Place, and it's a rehearing request. No testimony is allowed at any rehearing request from either party, for any side. So if anyone is here, and you're more than welcome to stay and watch, however, you cannot participate. It is a board-only discussion. Am I correct on that, Dean?
Yes.
Okay, so neither side will be able, we will be able to offer any testimony, any rebuttals, or anything to that degree. So I recognize, John, and I did want to let you guys know that, that you're welcome to stay if you're here for that hearing. However, I don't want to waste your time having you sitting here through all of this and thinking, two hours, or an hour, or half an hour, if we get lucky, whatever, that you're going to have an opportunity to address this board, not at this time. So, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so does anyone here that would like to leave, knowing that, then by all means, do so. I'm sorry, John. You're welcome to stay.
I'm not far away.
I just, like I said, sometimes people hang out all night, and then they find out, what? So, okay. Our first order of business tonight is for zoning application two thousand and twenty-one fifty-six, a variance request for six ninety-one Weers Boulevard. This is a variance application. The applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five thirty-three, maximum residential unit density, to allow for the conversion of a single-family home to a two-family home. Do I have the applicant here? I have an applicant in the name of Anthony Dupont and Lisa Dupont?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, if you could come before the board, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Okay, well, I did an addition, I guess, on this property three years ago.
Okay.
And it was going to be a game room upstairs. It's like eleven hundred square feet, and decided to turn it into an apartment instead. It's actually going to be for my wife and I, because we're going to end up selling our six ninety Weers Boulevard and moving across the street. But I need to have the variance, because our land is eleven thousand something square feet, and I think you need fifteen to have the two apartments.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking for the variance for.
Okay. And you want two apartments, two separate entrances?
There is already, it's already got two separate entrances and everything.
I'm trying to recall back, I was on the board then. I'm trying to recall the game room. It's starting to come back to me a little bit.
Yeah, it was supposed to be the garages downstairs. The large addition is behind the house. It's attached to the original house that was there. So the addition was twenty-eight by thirty-six, and there's a garage below, which I keep my cars in there and stuff, and upstairs was going to be the game room.
Right.
It's all wide open and everything, but that's where we want to put the apartment, which has a separate entrance going out. The house has its own two entrances, and that'll have its own two entrances also.
Okay. Karen, before we get going, I had one question on this. I noticed on the map that there's a fifty-foot frontage there. Is that enough frontage for two houses? Do we, is there another variance that this gentleman needs?
The only variance he needs is a lot of record, so it is what it is, as far as road frontage. Currently, the density allows for six units per acre. He would be allowed one point three eight units, so he's seeking the variance.
He would be allowed one point three eight, okay.
He's seeking the variance to allow for the two units.
Is it, it's a lot non-conforming because of the frontage?
The lot size and the frontage.
So it is non-conforming already?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mike, did you have any questions of the applicant? I just wanted to get that.
I do. And so when I'm looking for this variance that's requested, is it for the conversion from a single family to a two-family? It wasn't? Or is it for the variance on the density?
I think to answer your question, they need the density variance to allow the conversion to a two-family. Two-family isn't allowed use in the CR zone.
Right.
Okay. We've read your application. Is there anything in these five criteria that you're asked to satisfy, that you'd like to add at this time?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay. Does anyone else on the board have any questions of the applicant? Marsha?
Thank you. Mr. Dupont, I happened to go buy a property today, and I was just curious about parking, if you changed it to a two-family. And I noticed that when I faced your unit, you had parking area to the right of your unit, and it had two plow trucks in it. And then to the left, you had a driveway, and that was filled with cars as well.
My stuff, because I'm doing a little bit of work in there. The trucks are just parked there. They actually, one goes on six ninety-one side and plows that side, and the other one, I keep on that side of the road. Then they're just vehicles that are used for plowing.
There will be plenty of parking.
There is, because the whole, that's all the way around to the back. The garage door is in the back.
I see. That's what I was going to ask.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Marsha, Jay, Roland, Mike, anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Don't have.
Okay. Mike? Okay, thank you, Mr. Dupont.
Okay.
Just stick around. We may have other questions for you. Is this, because is there anyone here from the, in the viewing public that would wish to address the zoning request for six ninety Weers Boulevard? I'm, no? Oh.
One question. We, this is for six ninety or six ninety-one?
Six ninety-one.
Right. You live currently in six ninety?
Yes.
Oh, okay. My mistake.
Right, and I just wanted to be able to say that correctly.
Okay. All right. It looks like no one here from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, so I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Dupont, before we talk amongst us among ourselves, is there anything that you wish to add to this application?
No.
Okay, thank you. Roland?
I would have to look at it as well. It looks like a reasonable request to me. I have no problems with it.
Okay.
I think it is in line with the types of discussions we've had on density before, and certainly would be a reasonable use of this property. I don't see anything that raises any flags to me.
Okay. Jane, Marsha, anything you want to add to the?
No.
Okay, well, then I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept application two oh two one dash zero zero five six relative to six ninety-one Weers Boulevard, to be able to convert the upper part of the garage into living area. This is a building that already exists, and we're staying within the confines of the pre-existing structure. So that would not be contrary to the public interest, because this is providing the extra density for living on this piece of property. And that's why the spirit of the ordinance would be granted, and it will do justice in that they'll be able to be able to use this for residential also. And it's not going to affect the surrounding properties. You're merely making internal improvements to a home. This hardship could be covered in that this is already an unusually shaped lot with a short amount of frontage on it, and it is a reasonable use in the construct of this property.
Don't say. And I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, Dean, I'm sorry. I meant to say, staff, does staff have anything they want to add to this?
Just, I would like to add to the conditions.
Oh, okay. Do you, what do you recommend?
If you may, if I may. Obviously, a building permit will be required to.
Sure.
Make this into an apartment. And I want to make sure that there is a review of conformance to fire code requirements, because they would be different for an apartment than they would be for a game room.
Oh, okay. So when we approved it for a game room, all right, I understand.
And it may be fine. Just need to have that review.
Okay, thanks. And Mike, do you amend your motion to read as such with those conditions?
I do.
And do you amend your second?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll have a vote on the motion at hand with the conditions that Mike just added. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dupont. Did you hear the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have to go down to the.
You will need to follow, you'll need to follow up with the Planning Department, and they'll set up all your appointments and everything to make sure that all of your permits are in order, and that your house meets standards for an apartment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I was kind of hoping I'd weed some of you out, but apparently that didn't happen. All right, so I'm going to lay a few ground rules here. There are a lot of people here. I'm well aware that this can be a controversial item. I also want the people in this audience to understand the role of the zoning board. We are not here to determine whether or not the city needs or does not need a low-barrier cold-weather shelter. We are here solely to determine whether or not this is an appropriate use of this land at this time. Should this be approved, it will go to the Planning Board, which will do a complete site plan review, which is gobbledygook for saying that they will go through all of those other concerns. We are strictly limited at this board to the use of the land, and only the use of the land. I'm also going to ask that you keep your comments brief, because there's a lot of you, and you probably all want to speak. So two or three minutes. I know it doesn't sound like a long time, but you stand up here and talk for two or three minutes, and you'll realize it's a really long time. And if I, if nobody, if you get to a point where, in the evening, where we see that, you know, we're just repeating ourselves. Anyone that wants to speak can speak. All those that want to speak will have to speak after everyone else that has wanted to speak, if you want to speak a second time. Okay? So do we all understand everything? Okay.
Eric, can I just ask that if an abutter chooses to address the board, please identify yourself by name and your address, just for the record, so I can report in the minutes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, please give your name and address if you're an abutter to the property. We are here tonight to decide whether or not one hundred New Salem Street in Laconia, New Hampshire is a tax lot, five four forty-one, one sixty-seven-two, in the uniform commercial zone, is, can be used as a short-term, low-barrier shelter. I would ask that the applicant, who I believe is speaking on behalf of that, is the President, Don Longval, here?
Yes.
Okay. Don, I'd ask you to come up and address the board. Your, do I have, is this a five oh one C three? Is this a corporation? Do we have the appropriate paperwork on file that she's allowed to speak on behalf of?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Ms. Longval?
Can I go up with her?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, you, you guys are, please identify yourself.
David Longval.
Okay, all right.
So what is Isaiah sixty-one Cafe? Those who have never entered our doors might think that we are merely a soup kitchen, providing food to the poor. Some might call us enablers to the poor. However, those who have taken the time to enter our doors would say we are a respite, a place of hope in a dark world, an organization run entirely by volunteers, sharing unconditional love to those the world considers unlovely. Who comes to Isaiah sixty-one Cafe? Those suffering from mental illness, drug addictions, alcohol addictions, as well as those who have conquered addictions, but are trying to get to the next step of sober living. Some have addictions, some have no addictions at all, but are lonely and find community at the cafe keeping them out of depression. If you're not familiar with God's Word in the Book of Isaiah, Chapter sixty-one, verses one through four, it sums up Isaiah sixty-one Cafe. It's through God's Spirit and anointing that our team at Isaiah lives out the gospel to the less fortunate. By loosing the chains of the brokenhearted, by freeing the captives, by bringing light to sin and teaching repentance, releasing prisoners from darkness of addictions and strongholds, we comfort all who mourn and grieve through prayer and fellowship, replacing shame for beauty, replacing mourning with joy, replacing despair with praise. Our friends, the homeless, become oaks of righteousness, stable, displaying God's light, rebuilding families, and reviving the Lakes Region. Today, we have submitted this application for special exception to allow for the use of a low-barrier emergency cold-weather shelter for the months of December through March, where the average low temperature is at or below freezing. Through ministering to the homeless and less fortunate, we realize the lack of a shelter for those still in bondage to substance abuse disorder. Currently, all other local shelters, the Carey House and the Bellknap House, require continued sobriety, leaving these people outside in freezing temperatures with no shelter. We intend to use a portion of the property to further our mission to move people from homelessness to independence, by providing overnight shelter during frigid temperatures, and continuing to offer the existing day services through the cafe outreach to the homeless and needy population. We have a good relationship with the city's police and the neighboring businesses, and have worked with the city's homeless task force headed by Mayor Andrew Hosmer. The city's homeless task force itself attempted to open an emergency cold-weather shelter last winter. We believe our emergency shelter will be successful for multiple reasons. We already have relationships with our friends based on respect, and our friends are familiar with our rules, which the majority follow without issue. Since inception, we have become an integral part of bringing hope and seeing changed lives of the homeless and less fortunate in the Lakes Region, which has resulted in less drug overdoses statewide. According to an article dated July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one in the Laconia Daily Sun, "Drug Overdoses in New Hampshire Have Decreased From An Average Of Four Hundred And Thirty-Eight From The Years Of Two Thousand And Fifteen To Two Thousand And Nineteen To Three Hundred And Ninety-Three In Two Thousand And Twenty." I believe the reduction is even greater if you were to isolate the Lakes Region based on the actual deaths of our friends. We partner with the Doorway Navigating Recovery Sobriety Center and Tilton Resource Center to connect those with addictions to supportive services. We are welcomed and appreciated by these numerous social service neighbors, as well as local businesses, as further demonstrated in the supporting letters from Abutters Mills Industries and Water Street Cafe. The next, I was just going to go into the points, those questions, and I don't know if you have a different.
Okay, what, at least as chair, I want to hear, and what we're here to decide tonight is, by our statute, our RSA, we have eight standards that you've answered here.
Mm-hmm.
That have to be met for the use of this land for a shelter, for your purposes.
Correct.
Okay? And I see that you've addressed those here.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone on the board, I've read them, does anyone on the board have any questions that they'd like to ask? Or did you want to continue on and address these
I was just going to continue and highlight some of the ones that I thought were important.
Okay, thank you.
Does that sound?
All of them, so you can have it as read.
Pardon?
Take your urgent, put on all of them, so we can have it.
Okay.
We had it in here.
I'll continue with it.
Do you need me to read them all? I wasn't going to read them all, because I thought you had them all. But I was going to highlight the ones that were most important. Is that okay, or do you want me to read them?
However you want to present it. I mean, you're going to, we're going to, the members of the board have the opportunity to ask you questions.
Okay.
So, you know what I mean. With that being said, if we don't think one of these criteria is answered to our satisfaction, we will ask.
Okay, great. So opening an emergency shelter will provide a warm place for the homeless and the addicted population to stay overnight, removing them from the downtown business entryways, city property, as well as private property where they sleep in tents. We will provide not only a warm building and beds, but also supervision to all housed. All belongings will be locked and unavailable during the overnight hours, so continued substance use during night hours will not be allowed. Aiding in pedestrian safety for not only our friends, but also to the general public. The overnight shelter will reduce traffic congestion, because those who currently sleep in their cars on city property will instead park their cars in Isaiah's attached parking lot, and will reside inside the building. We do not currently and will not allow our friends to sleep in their vehicles on-site. They will be offered a bed inside or be asked to leave the premise. Since the majority of our friends do not have access to nor own cars, there is no undue traffic congestion.
Okay.
Currently, our day shelter is considered low-barrier, which allows those with substance abuse disorder to abide during the day, Monday through Friday, nine to two. We seldom call on the police or fire departments during our operating hours. At night, our friends tend to congregate and use drug and alcohol at city parks and trails, where drug and alcohol use is not permitted. Yet, because they are unsupervised, many times chaos and havoc occur, resulting in a demand for police and fire assistance. The emergency shelter would reduce the demand on such city departments, as we would offer supervision and discipline, so that drug and alcohol use would not be allowed to continue in lieu of warm, safe shelter. We know some of the friends will choose not to comply and may leave during the night, but the majority will stay. Our proposed emergency shelter will seek to bring the homeless and addicted individuals off the streets and into a safe, warm place and out of weather elements. As a result, the individuals will not have further access to drugs and alcohol during their stay overnight, which assists in the betterment of health for them and a safer environment for the general public. The neighborhood is mixed use of both business and residential, so having an overnight shelter would align with the neighborhood and actually enhance the public's health, safety, and welfare. We plan to use the original brick building for the shelter. The bunk beds will be confined to approximately a thousand square feet of space within that building. We plan to purchase metal bunk beds and mattresses to house as many as will fit in this space, as well as comply with the allowed occupant load. We will run the emergency shelter from December to March, from eight PM to eight thirty AM, seven days a week. Our friends will have access to restrooms, but all the remaining space will be locked. Why do we do what we do? In the Book of Matthew, Chapter twenty-five, verses thirty-five and thirty-six, Jesus says, "When you saw me hungry, you fed me. When you found me thirsty, you gave me drink. When I had no place to stay, you invited me in. And when I was poorly clothed, you covered me. When I was sick, you tenderly cared for me. And when I was in prison, you visited me." And verse forty continues, "When you cared for one of the least of these, you demonstrated love for me." We are doing what God has commissioned all to do. How many more would be freed from the chains of addictions by having shelter from the cold? I believe if you were in their shoes, you too might try to numb the pain with substance abuse. This shelter will not only protect lives, but it will give purpose to those who have overcome their addictions by allowing them to give back. So that is the end of my.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Have a question.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, do any board members have questions they'd like to ask along those?
We didn't address C on this.
Well, I mean, C is addressed here. Do you have a question you want to ask them?
No, not necessarily. I just didn't hear it addressed.
I said I wasn't reading them all. I was just reading, highlighting the main.
I was hoping we were able to enter this as read.
Oh, all right.
And really looking to hear the voice of the applicant, rather than just.
Do you, I can read them. I don't mind.
Okay, all right, yeah, I mean, you've been asked, so, you know, please.
Yeah, I think, all right, so. So, do you need A? A is just that I have the.
No, you've been there. The only one.
We know which one.
Yes. C. The applicant currently offers a day shelter, providing access to bathrooms, showers, and laundry to the less fortunate and homeless population five days a week. These services have not overloaded any public water, drainage, or sewer system in the past three years of operation. Given the fact that the same people who attend the day shelter will most likely stay overnight, the demand remains the same, and no system is overloaded. And then E was not applicable?
Yeah, yeah, E is just.
And then H. Given the mixed use of business and residential in the neighborhood, my proposal will hardly differ from such permitted uses, as it merely allows us to ensure that the positive effects of its services will reach a greater number of people in need beyond its limited number of residents. By approving our proposed use of the property, this board will be offering the applicant, me, us, an opportunity to expand our charitable works, serving a greater number of people in desperate need of aid, and ultimately create a stronger community in the heart of the city through the mission to move people from homelessness to independence.
Real quick on question and answer. See, the shower washer facilities that are used during the day, obviously those will not be used during the night hours, so the usage will pretty much remain the same. The only things that will be used in terms of water will be the bathrooms.
The bathrooms, okay, so, okay. And your, your operating hours, as you intend them, are to be eight PM to eight thirty AM?
Yes.
Okay, and then your day shelter operations will restart with the food?
Our official hours are nine to two, but we generally are there. When we're there at eight thirty, we allow them to come in, so they could just, we will shut down the shelter.
Yeah, okay.
And that will not be accessible during the day.
Okay, and then what happens from eight thirty in the morning until two in the afternoon?
Our day shelter?
Your day shelter.
We currently have.
Okay, and until eight PM, when you reopen?
Oh, you mean from two until?
When you close your day shelter until when you plan to open?
Yeah, they, they leave.
They leave?
Excuse me?
Yes, they would, they would go about their business as normal.
As normal.
Okay. Marsha?
I was just curious, what is the occupancy going to be? How does, how's that determined? They talked about using a thousand square feet for the bunk beds, et cetera. How, how does that work?
Occupancy will be determined by the fire department.
By the fire department.
Okay.
And I did talk to the fire department about that, and they said that it would be based on the total square feet that, that we're allowing access to. So the total square feet is twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at the full score footage, the full score footage of the facility, it's pretty big. We're only asking for a small portion of that, probably less than one-eighth of the property to be used.
It's eighty-five hundred square feet total.
Yeah, we're asking for roughly a thousand.
A thousand for the beds.
For just the low-barrier shelter. So it's a very small portion of the overall facility.
We're hoping that there'd at least be fifteen bunk beds that would fit, so thirty people, but, but I'm waiting for this answer to bring in the fire chief to confirm that.
Okay, um, how many parking spaces do you have officially on this?
I think it could fit forty cars, it certainly would be a lot less parking than Pittman's, when he would run.
Well, yeah, we know that, but, I, I mean.
It's, it's hard because they're, they're not lined out, but the property goes all the way back to the.
I think he said it fit a hundred cars in our parking lot.
I think that might have been before the wild trail, I don't.
I, I was gonna say, because there's a railroad easement and all that other stuff that goes through that, yeah.
But we, like we said, we don't have a lot of people that have cars. As far as if you're worried about parking for the shelter.
Okay.
There's a lot more that don't have cars than have cars.
I would say, I would say so, but, I, I mean, these are, these are, like I said, these are some of the actual specific land, how this land is being used that we have to address here.
The overall traffic compared to a Pittman venue is substantially lower.
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
The parking lot is a half, half, half acre of land.
Oh, okay.
Jane, I, I think what you guys are doing is great, I mean, really great, and especially what you've even been doing during the day, and, and that'll be great to accommodate people in the evening when it's cold. Besides that, would you be offering any counseling or any direction for them? I mean, I look at it as we're just enabling them, but yes, I know, we're also providing for them. Will they, will you have any counseling there for them, or any ways to try to?
We, that's what we do during the daytime.
Yeah, but anything in the evening when people are there?
The evening will be strictly, um, get out of the cold, go to bed.
Because also, between that two and eight timeframe is usually when they do the things that they shouldn't do. Um, so when they come in, they're not necessarily in the best mindset for counseling either.
We do help facilitate getting them to their, um, mental health appointments during the day as well.
Okay, okay.
And we're working with Health First, First Health, Health First.
First Health First, yes.
Yeah, to, to come in and offer services as well, so. And we work again at the doorway on addiction issues where we'll take them to the doorway. So, all that's done during the day. The night is strictly, um, a time for respite for them to come up out of the cold.
Uh huh, and, um, we understand what enabling is, and we don't wanna enable. We know that, um, sometimes you need to come to the bottom to be able to wanna come, get better. But nobody deserves to be in freezing cold temperatures, which is why we're doing the shelter for a four-month period and not for the whole, we're not asking for it to be the whole year.
Okay, is there a temperature trigger?
The.
What I mean by that is, a lot of cold weather shelters, low barrier shelters, operate on a temperature trigger. In other words, they don't open unless the temperature is predicted to drop below a certain Fahrenheit, in our case.
Okay.
Um, I actually did get a whole printout from Deputy Raffo.
Okay.
On emergency shelters.
Right.
And it says specifically, um, a hundred and twenty days is which are allotted, which is where the four months from December to March came into. So, I mean, we did look up the temperature, the average temperature for those months, and those are the coldest months.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
But it would be, um, very hard to manage a shelter with coverage of supervision. You're, we're required to have two supervisors a night. It would be very hard to base it on a continuous changing weather pattern. Um, so I don't think it's much to ask for four months of the most frigid weather.
Okay, and during those, um, hours that you're not open, from two to eight, how, I mean, do you plan on addressing, um, people congregating in that area?
Well, we currently don't allow people on site after hours now, so.
Okay.
They're already used to that rule, and we have cameras on site, so when we're home, we can see that there's people. And we call the police when we need to, but, um, but they're already into that habit, and, um, they're gonna wanna be able to stay in a cold, in a warm place, so I don't believe that we will have trouble with that.
Okay, are you, okay, and are you familiar with our master plan? The city's master plan?
I, what do you mean by familiar with it?
Have you read it? I mean, one of the questions here is H. Is, is that something is consistent with the spirit and intent of the chapter and the master plan? The master plan is an overall directional guidance of how the land should be used in our city. It, it's a blueprint, I guess, of, of, it, it's, it's like a channeling document. And that's one of the specific questions here, is how this fits into our master plan. In other words, where do we, where do we as a city wanna be in five years, ten years, fifteen years? And what can we as land use officials do to make that happen? Okay, so it's the zoning.
Well, because our, our plan is not to just, um, enable people, it's to actually get them from homelessness to, um, independence. And our daytime shelter is helping to counsel through Bible studies, through, um, music, um, through fellowship with them. That the, we have already a bunch of people that have already risen up to want to give back. And so, we are making a change, this will make an even better change because those that might have just been substance abused to, to numb from the cold will now have an opportunity to not do that, and they'll see that, wow, I couldn't have a life without that. So, it, I don't see how it could not go with a master plan of revival.
Yeah, and I think that the master plan, we're asking for a small piece of Laconia, a very small piece of property to be used to, in one sense, bring the homeless to a community within one location versus on people's porches, on businesses' front doorsteps, to actually have a bathroom to use at night instead of soiling someone's front steps. I think that would fall into the master plan, that, that, uh, these are the people that don't wanna be seen, that the community doesn't necessarily wanna see.
No, I understand.
And so, we're asking to take them in in this small parcel of property, one location, under supervision. And if that doesn't fit into a city's master plan, then we might be in the wrong city.
Well, no, no, I, I mean, I'm, I'm asking, it's one of the questions, like I said, we're a land use board. And you bring something up that, that I'm curious about, is you're open from eight at night until, what, eight in the morning?
Well, that's where you want to be.
That's what, well, that's your proposed operating hours.
Eight to eight thirty.
And the planning board, like I said, if this board approves this, then the planning board is gonna go into all of these things in more detail, okay, just so that you understand. But with that being said, how are you gonna address people who come, who leave? Who wanna come back? I mean, are you gonna admit everybody? Does everyone have, is there a curfew? You have to be there at eight o'clock?
So, the check-in is at eight?
The check-in is at eight?
And there'll be a, a window of an hour?
Okay.
And then, once you leave, you're not, no longer allowed back?
Okay, so, once you come in at eight, or between eight and nine, is your window of?
In eight, nine, you can go out for a smoke or whatever, you know.
Right, yeah, okay, yeah.
And then, after nine, it's, it's.
See, yeah, and the only caveat would be if they have a doctor's note, if they came from the ER.
To come in later than that.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
To be admitted in, through that.
But it's, it's, it's gonna be locked down, they, they can leave, if they leave, they can't come back for the night.
Okay, so you're gonna have those rules in place, and you're gonna have?
And that's why we chose a later start time, because I knew if I picked that window of between two and it's gonna be an in and out, in and out, and that's too difficult to supervise and manage. So, this is merely just to give them a night's sleep in a warm place.
And you're gonna put astreys outside so they're not throwing their cigarette butts all over the street and everything, right?
We have that now, so we have, yes.
Anyone else got any questions?
Mike does.
Mike does.
Mike's been raising the same.
On their journey from helplessness and homelessness to being, um, contributing individuals, how long does this journey typically take? I mean, is this something that when they check in, in December, they're gonna be there till June, or whatever the operating, um, range is? Or do they stay one night in a row, twelve nights in a row?
So, my hope is, is one, we will have a sign-up sheet within our cafe during the daytime. You're wondering about, like, the bed situation, like, is it gonna be?
I, I'm not worried, I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Truly. Um, how, how long the journey takes? I mean, is it typically a three-month journey, a one-month journey? How long does it take with biblical counseling to, uh, attain permanent or more standardized living conditions?
You're asking a question that, that no psychologist can answer. It's different for every person. Um, some of them have mental illness that needs to be dealt with. Um, I mean, there's a lady now that's on the wild trail, homeless, had a stroke.
It's no long trail here.
The wild trail?
Yeah.
Long trail's over in Vermont.
Wild trail, no, the wild, yeah. Um, so, there's really, it's, everyone's different. Um, we have people that come in just for a couple days because they, there was a fire in their apartment, or they got evicted and live in, in their car and need a, a place to stay. Fortunately, city welfare, I mean, they've got protocols they have to follow, and it's not the fastest process to get someone into housing. And meanwhile, this lady that had a stroke has been homeless for three weeks now, living in the outdoors. So, in that situation, yeah, maybe there's a, a hard, fast deadline. As soon as welfare can get her, um, housing, then she would no longer need our services.
Okay, um, Roland? Um, Mike, you got, you got for now, we just.
Yep, good for now, thanks.
Do you feed them as well?
Yes, during the day, five, we're open Monday through Friday.
I know you have a cafe next door, but, uh, the people who come in from eight, and, and evening to eight in the morning, are those people provided a meal, or is that?
Well, we give breakfast, so they'll get a breakfast, but we, we're not planning on doing food during the night. It's merely to sleep.
And you provide, I think, like, uh, this may sound ridiculous, but you provide them a TV or something, so they have. They're probably not going to go to bed at eight o'clock at night.
Most of them have iPhones, and they can do that on their, their iPhones. But it's, you also have to, I mean, you want them to sleep, you know what I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, and again, our goal. Our goal isn't to, you know, make them comfortable with, you know, TVs and things like that. Our goal's strict, strictly to get them out of the cold and hopefully extend their life a little bit longer so they can make the decision to, you know, get out of the situation that some of them are in. So, it's strictly to, to get them in a warm environment.
They would have their own iPads or something?
Yeah.
Not many have iPads, but many have phones.
Do you guys have a lights out or last call?
That's nine o'clock, is our plan.
That's, uh, all right.
And, and the, the, the plan, because of the short check-in, is we don't want them out, roam in the neighborhood. We want them in the facility, and that's why they, they come at eight, they can go out for an hour, get their last smoke in. Nine o'clock, lights are off, doors are shut, and if they go out, the door's locked behind them, they can't get back in, and there will be supervision.
Okay, and then, once you mention it here, that your, their possessions are put in separate lockers, I guess you're gonna set up something for security, for individual security, so.
We have an intake room that they'll come through, we'll take their belongings to ensure that there's any mishap.
And they won't have access to that during that, it's a separate room by itself.
Do you change, uh, bedding every day?
Um, so what we're hoping to do is, um, is, I was mentioning before, we, that we'll have a sign-up. And, and as long as they, um, we're hoping that it will be the same people night after night. Um, so we'll have that consistency, so as long as they don't miss a couple nights in a row, they'll keep that bed. And therefore, once a week, we're actually gonna have them do their laundry of their bedding. Um, and we're gonna have it all consistent, so we know where the bedding's coming from. Um, and so, yeah, so then they'll do their bedding, launder it, and then have it.
You have a laundromat, do you go?
We have, um, we have a laundry room.
Right there?
That has four units that, yeah.
Marcia?
No, I'm just kind of curious to hear from other.
Okay. All right, I do, just, this is time to ask the applicants if there's anything that you don't believe that's been addressed within the, this room or within this application, now's your time to ask. I mean, you, they, these people are gonna stick around, so if we have questions after, we have public input, you know, we can always bring them back up. Okay, Jane, anything right now?
No.
Okay, then, um, I'll ask you to take a seat, and I, like I said, I read my ground rules, and, um, I'll ask people to come up and speak either for or behalf of this particular application. Oh, okay.
My name is Brad Brown, I live at Thirty Messer Street. I believe I know everyone in this room.
Okay.
I have volunteered, I've been in Laconia twenty-two years. I volunteered at Victim Services at Laconia Police Department, done tons of ride-alongs with the police officers. I know firsthand, not only as a volunteer, but as riding in a police car, what our police officers deal with on cold nights in Laconia with our homeless. For twenty-two years, I've heard Laconia asks for help, we need someone to step up. What's the solution? What can we do? What can you people do to help? I'm fortunate, I can volunteer in a shelter that helps, that does what Laconia is asking. This place is flawless. We have an occasional uprising because we're working with very ill people. They have it well planned. I'm one of the ones that walks the streets of Laconia at night, never had a problem. And yet, I read the paper and I hear all these problems, people scared to death. Our homeless population are the kindest, gentlest, sweetest people that you can meet. I'm sad that some of you have never visited Isaiah sixty-one. I'm really sad because if you could see what they do, what we do, you'd be part of it. Your lives would change and you'd become part of it, it's addictive. You're helping people that so desperately need our help. I've been fortunate, I've seen Laconia step up in places they, they didn't have to, but they did. So, I am asking that you please consider this and take fifteen people off the street at night to help our police department have a little bit more peace at night, that they don't have to deal with the numbers they do, that Laconia's streets are a little bit safer. Not that these people would hurt anyone, but the image is what scares people. So, I appreciate your consideration. I think it's the greatest gift you can give to the city of Laconia, is your cooperation in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
My name's Donna Clamont, I live at one oh four New Salem Street, I'm in a butter.
Yep.
And with all due respect, my experience with Isaiah sixty-one has been a horror show. I think it's an ideal thought in terms of providing for our homeless, but the experience that I've had to endure has been awful. I've had people that take stuff, move stuff on my property. It's just as recent as the other night where things were moved from the back of my garage. I've gone out to take my dog to do his business and had a gentleman, thank God his back was to me, urinating in my yard. And I asked him what he was doing, and with no care tells me that he's urinating in different terms. I've had people, and, and again, no disrespect to the idea of what they're trying to do, but on a regular basis, after two o'clock, yes, they close their doors. But I see people that are at the picnic table arguing, cussing, swearing at me. And I tell them, I will call the police, and they go off on me. So, when you're considering, and I've lived in this home for forty-two years. Forty-two years I've lived in my home. And this is the worst conditions that I've had to endure. And I can tell you the history, I can tell you the history of the buildings that they own now. Originally, when I moved there, the Sher Tocks, that was their storage, the area that is now was Pittman's. The city of Laconia, where Isaiah has their cafe, was their storage area for their public service, that they had that. That they had that, and I've never had a problem until now. I put lights up in the back of my home now, I lock everything. I post because I have people that walk across my lawn, drive across my lawn. And when they say that there isn't a problem, I ask you, you call the police and you ask them how many times they are at Isaiah's. You call our fire department and ask them, how many times have they had to go there because there has been an issue? So I ask you to seriously consider whether this is truly in my best interest and our community's best interest to have this because it's not well-supervised. Thank you.
Um, can I ask you one question, Ms. Clermont?
Absolutely.
Is there, um, you're the director butter?
I am, I live right be- I live between Isaiah and the police station.
Okay, you're, you're that house that's right between the two.
I am.
Okay, and, um, is there a fence?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this application? I, just come up, I don't, I, you know.
I've worked a homeless shelter for about six years and certainly there are times when the police have to be called and, I'm sorry?
And you are?
Oh, Mary Aaron Ocean. And I, I'd just like to say if this does come to be, I'm gonna make sure that I designate a night a week that I'd be happy to volunteer. I just don't wanna see people out in the cold and, um, I know that when I've worked homeless shelters, when people have been under the influence, if the police don't, um, put them in PC, which is protective custody.
Right.
We've had people freeze to death and I just don't wanna see that happen, so I certainly wanna be able to give of my time if this does come to be.
And are you a city resident, ma'am?
I actually live in Concord, New Hampshire, but I would, I would certainly travel up to give one night a week of my time if this does come to be, to help my fellow man and woman.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else, um? Mr. Bean?
Hello, everybody. Craig Bean, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and ninety-seven, New Salem Street, directly across the street, Salvation Army's property, Culligan, that whole other side. Owned property since two thousand and ten, owned the other section since, uh, twenty seventeen. All in favor of what they're doing, love it, don't know if that's the right area, and I'm gonna give you guys some ideas, I mean, of what I've had to deal with since Isaiah has been on property. I have numerous, as Mrs. Clermont has mentioned, I have numerous phone calls into the PD for trailers being broken into, a garage being broken into with a guy having residence, moving around my mother's, uh, father's furniture that was in there and making his own little condo in there. We've had three different trailers, one gentleman Laconia Rotary Club's trailer was actually forced their way into. My personal trailer had propane tanks and bicycles stolen out of it. We have dumpsters continuously going through Salvation Army. We have to battle folks to stay off of the property, they're actually going through the dumpsters looking for things. We've had numerous needles on property. Also, in an area where you can't be seen, there's also a little cubby area that we've actually found bedding overtime. Also, numerous feces and people also urinating, people sleeping on property. Lot of this has all started once Isaiah came into town, in that general area. The people parking, we've had, at one point, the city was allowed to use the parking lot for some parking. That stopped since due to people being there after hours. Um, and then also, as not, let's see, two years ago, Isaiah's manager, uh, I think Ray, if I remember his name, he actually slept in his car on my property. So, like, where are they going, they say they're going places, that's my question, where are people going? They're going across the street. We've had to deal with people of leaving belongings through the course of the day, so like, they're stashing stuff. So when they go out and have their little time, I can show you where it goes. We've had to deal with it. Salvation Army has picked it up numerous times, my tenants, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, there's six tenants. Their trailers have all gone through, doors have been gone through, people sound asleep behind the storage buildings. Lot of different things going on, but I just wanna look as what we're going for, you know, is that, with, with what we're doing in downtown Laconia and these investments that we're seeing, you know, the In-N-Outs, you know, I almost consider this is gonna be turned into a hotel. You know, and then, my question also with the, I was reading through the numbers here. I think actually, Gail, you brought up the, uh, the two PM to eight PM, where do these people go? We can tell you, Donna and I get, you know, pictures have been taken, they just, they go roam. Unfortunately, I'm on the other side, we're, Donna and I are on the other side of the fence. The wild trail puts the divider. We found out that I guess the state was not, the state is the butter onto one side, is what I'm being told. So nobody else on the other side knew about this meeting. So also, I'd like to put that out there of, you know, sixty-seven, Wild Water Street, nobody knew about this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Tina Kelly and I live at twenty-three Tilton Ave in Laconia. And, uh, I've lived in Laconia for about a year and a half now, and prior to that, I lived thirty years in Manchester. I guess the first thing I wanna say is that we keep calling them these people. And the only ones who have called them our friends are the, are Dawn and Dave. And these people are us, we're all just a paycheck. How many of us can go, how many paychecks before we become these people? Who have no income possibly, who have nowhere to go. I mean, how many times in the paper do we see that there's, the housing is very expensive in this area? And that, you know, housing is twelve to sixteen, eighteen hundred a month. And so, these people are us. They are us. And, and as far as, you know, someone had said, you know, what about their journey? Well, there is no mental health care out there, if, if anyone knows anything about the mental health care, the whole country is struggling with mental health care. Whether you have insurance, and if you don't, then you are considered even less on the list. I have insurance and it's a struggle for me to get mental health care, so, for any reason, for anyone. And so, you know, we're all saying that they're doing a good job, but nobody, where are we supposed to put them? On an island? In the middle of Lake Winnipesaukee because we don't want them around us? They're two doors down from the police station. You know, in Manchester, you know, they were right, you know, the shelter was near the police station as well. There's many shelters in Manchester, as well as, uh, you know, in Concord as well, for the longest time Concord had a church, they did a volunteer. Um, and that's what they're gonna be doing initially, is having volunteers staff it. And for them to be able to run this, this, uh, shelter with volunteers is, you know, kudos. I mean, how many places can do that for any length of time to be having volunteers? And so, the homeless are here, they're everywhere. If, if the people are not aware of huge tent cities in Concord, well, there are tent cities here in Laconia. And, and we can't just keep shutting our eyes, and if we get them off the street, you know, i- it's, it's cold out there, if we get them off the street, then perhaps a lot of what the abutters are complaining about is gonna stop, you know, the urination, the defecation on their property. And as far as theft, no matter where you are in Laconia, I am nowhere near them, and there's theft on my property. And so, it doesn't matter where you are in Laconia, look at the police log, it's happening. And so, it doesn't matter where you are as far as that goes. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, I mean, we're all up here saying these people, and I think we need to, you know, first off, remember that we could be those people as well. And that, you know, if we're gonna come up here, the abutters, and say that, you know, what's going on, again, in Laconia, it's happening everywhere. And how do we know it's those people? It could be people with jobs that are doing this as well. So, um, this is a, you know, well-needed place. And it, they're doing a service to help the people on their journey, which is, you know, it's a journey, everyone's journey is different. Um, and so, you know, the city of Laconia, I believe, does their best as well. Um, you know, but in the meanwhile, this is also a service that's gonna help, um, with everything that they need. So, you know, they need food, they need shelter, these are the basic necessities of life for anyone and everyone. So I just ask that the board consider that, and if they don't do it, who's gonna do it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, my name is Mariette Fox and I live in Guilford.
Okay.
And I have just moved up here permanently for a couple of years ago and become involved with Isaiah Cafe. Uh, prev- previous to living here, I lived in Milford, New Hampshire, and I was the, uh, founder and director of an outreach program there, and I was the full-time director for twenty-seven years. And so, I think I'm in a position to be able to judge the, the quality of a, a situation where the people are working with less fortunate people. And we're so lucky to have Dave and Dawn willing to do this, first of all. They volunteer their time, they have used their funds very often to, to run Isaiah. They have six children, one of them is always there when the, when the cafe is open. So they're volunteering that much time, they're willing to do this, they're wonderful, they love the people, they call them friends. And I, I think we're just lucky to have that situation, and I'd hate to see that being denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kevin Tobin, I've been a resident of, uh, Laconia for, uh, since ninety-seven December. I came up from Manchester, um, and I'm, uh, I use some of the services in Laconia. I live on seventy-three Fenton Ave, which is, you know, within earshot or, um, I worked in Manchester for a Helping Hands, which was a, um, a recovery-based, you know, like people halfway house and, uh, in spare, Christian, Christian organization. And Ron Genren was a part of that, I worked for him in the food pantry and, and likewise here, I've, uh, I came in ninety-seven and, uh, I've spent, uh, I've been sober, I'm an alcoholic, I've been sober since ninety-four. And I go to the services that we have here in Laconia, I have a sponsor. I go to meetings, uh, and I'm on that side of it, but, um, I'm really thankful for Isaiah, I've really got connected there, and like I did in Manchester, I got involved, um, participating in some of the daily, some of the daily things. I'm a Christian and, uh, I'm able to, um, fellowship at Is- uh, at Isaiah and, um, help where need be. And, um, I've been in Laconia, you know, s- uh, like I said, since ninety-seven. And I, I believe, um, that homelessness and addiction, uh, these are things that have run rampant in Laconia. And it, um, it's not location designated. That there's no location in Laconia that we don't struggle with addiction, homelessness. And, uh, I know that they're ushered on and I, I just, um, I'm really, I'm really thankful for Isaiah because I have a place there that I can help our friends, I can connect with other, um, volunteers, and I feel like there's a greater purpose. And I, I don't think that we can, uh, close, I don't wanna close my eyes and close my heart on the services that these people need, and I think that people do, um, I think that they do find, they do get help. And, you know, like there's navigating recovery, I've been, I'm involved in art in, in, in the, in the area, and I find that to be really helpful. And, uh, navigating, I've, I've done it with navigating, I've done it here, uh, downstairs with Joe Gar- uh, Joe, the owner of this, the building that sold it. So I was really involved in healing through art. And so, I find that Isaiah has lots of areas that it can grow, and I think that this homeless shelter is an essential part in, in, in the, for Laconia that'll help them to start to get them on their way. Instead of, uh, worrying about, uh, you know, roaming the street all night and not having a warm place. I work at Gunstock also, I've worked there for twenty-two years, and I live close to the lake. So, I am outside all day, teaching snowboarding and reaching out, and, uh, I've gone to the end of my street in the morning and, um, where homeless have, you know, ar- around the, the shores of Lake Wanisquam, and, uh, two minutes and, and your skin is, you know, you're in freezing cold conditions. And I can't imagine trying to survive in them conditions, you know? So the homeless shelter, uh, this cold, uh, low barrier, I think it's, uh, would be, uh, really essential to help some of the homeless to get underway and get working towards, uh, having a better life and being successful, uh, people in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Anthony Barzac, I live at thirty-two Honeycomb Way in New Market, New Hampshire.
Okay.
My, uh, wife is a business owner, uh, at fifty-three Beacon Street West in Laconia, directly behind, um, the Isaiah. And so, um, I wanna start out, first of all, with just communicating that I have an older brother who has a drug and alcohol problem. And it's so severe, he's dying. He's been homeless since February, and, um, I had a hard time, we still haven't been able to place him anywhere because he hasn't committed to therapy. And so, um, he's living in a motel right now and, um, for, probably for the rest of his life. And, um, so I understand, I empathize with people that have drug and alcohol problems or mental problems, and I also, um, understand the challenges, um, that are associated with this and also what these kind people are, are trying to do as well. So, um, as a business owner, I've had, uh, over the last three years, we've had people come through the back door, um, and shoot up drugs in our, in our restroom, shoot up drugs in the alley behind us. Where they come from, I don't know, I don't know if it's related to Isaiah or not, I know it's a problem downtown, right? Um, and so, um, one of the things I thought about, you know, this could be a really great thing for the community, um, and be really helpful to a, a lot of people, but sometimes, um, these shelters get out of control. So, if it's possible, if this exemption gets approved, um, I don't know if you can do this or not, but you could possibly approve it with conditions. Something like if there are X number of disturbances at that facility in a year's time, something along those lines. Because if it's a, a great thing and it works out like everybody says, fantastic, but if it's not, and things get out of control, um, then I think I should have a second look at it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Makley, forty Crescent Street, Laconia, I manage, uh, fifty-one through seventy-one Beacon Street West. Anthony's one of my tenants, and, uh, sixty-seven Water Street. Uh, Anthony pretty much said it, we've had problems in the back alley, in the bathrooms, we've had two locked bathrooms that were open during the public hour days, just to keep, uh, the drug activity out. The fire department's been there numerous times, so now everything's locked up, so. Uh, as a safety standpoint, uh, I'm a little nervous if this thing truly does go through. That's all I have to say. Thank you for time.
My name's Lori Gabriella, I'm a Laconia resident, and I think we all hear what they're trying to do, I think everyone has a heart, everyone thinks it's great. But I haven't heard from them, I'd like to hear- I'd like to hear, what are they doing? They're drawing the people in, but what are they doing to control all the problems for the abutters that the abutters are having? I'd, I'd like to hear from them about, you know, what their goals are for that. How are you protecting the neighbors after you bring everybody in?
Um, well, give me one second. Is there anyone else in the audience that has anything to say right now? I am gonna give the, I am gonna give the applicants a chance to address your concerns briefly, okay? But I wanna make sure that everyone who had something to say has had an opportunity to say it, with the exception of the applicants.
Can the public speak again?
Um, briefly, ve- very briefly, okay?
We all have to address the elephant in the room, which is not in my neighborhood. I live on Messer Street. I've been there twenty-two years. I've seen it all. I've had all these problems in my neighborhood, in my backyard. Twenty-two years. All these things these people are saying, I've been doing. I want Cadillacs in my neighborhood. I want my neighbors to have Cadillacs. I want high-rise apartments next to me. We're taking fifteen homeless people off the street, a hundred yards away. There's a police department. We're not the police department. We're just trying to take fifteen people out of the cold at night, protect them, keep them safe inside a building. If they leave, they can't come back. That's fifteen less people that are doing these things that we hear. Someplace, we have to have a place for these people. This is a start. It might catch on fire. Maybe the city will have a facility that will make us bigger, more space. It'll light a fire, and that's all we're asking. Let us take fifteen people off the street so they're not urinating in the backyard. They're not sleeping in the... We, they sleep in my backyard. But I take care of them during the day.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask the Longvilles if they could come back briefly. Um, you've heard some concerns. I'm primarily concerned, I, I mean, I'm concerned with what everybody had to say. Oh, I'm sorry, was there someone else that hadn't spoken that wanted to speak? Okay. Um, I, how would you address the con- the concerns of, of what people brought up in terms of maybe fencing? Mr. Bean's concerns about some of the right, um, some of the vandalism that goes on across the street? I understand you're not the police department.
No, we're not.
But, um, uh, what a couple of business owner at Beacon Street has had to say, I mean, those are, so those are some of the land-related issues that, that we're here to discuss. And I'm gonna give you an opportunity to, you know, briefly, to address those.
I guess I just have one thing to say, and, you know, I, I, or a question to ask all those people that spoke about.
Direct everything through me. I'm giving you an opportunity at a rebuttal, which is very rare on this board.
Okay. So, they make it seem like it's because we came that these things are happening. And I, as, as Brad shared, he's lived here twenty-two years, and, and with drugs just started happening because we came here? I, I don't think that that is, is the case.
Again, our question, my question to you is, how are you going to address the specific concerns that you heard here tonight from the abutters?
So, we're asking for, eh, eh, what's it called, an exception?
A special exception.
Whatever we call it. Um, we're already operating at one hundred New Salem Street, Monday through Friday.
Right.
Okay? That's not changing. So, the issue is, are we going to be allowed to provide an overnight low-barrier shelter so that these people, our, our friends that are in the community have a place to come? Instead of breaking into someone's storage shed because they're freezing to death, they have a warm place to come. Instead of shooting up in a bathroom, they'll be under supervision. We are not the police, we are located where we're located strategically.
Mm-huh.
Vicinity of the police department. We are where we are because that's where the homeless are. They're not there because we're there, we're there because they're there. Homeless and addiction did not start three years ago in Laconia, started way before. And if there wasn't a need for our services, we wouldn't be doing it. If Laconia was doing it, we wouldn't have to do it. If the churches were doing it, we wouldn't have to do it. Everybody complains, but nobody wants to do anything. This is an opportunity for Laconia to finally step up and do something and to help, truly help the community. Truly put a new face on Laconia. Instead of having the homeless in the alleys at night, they have a place to be. It's, um, it's disheartening. I, I, I invite you to call and look at the fire logs and the police logs. We've been open for three years, and we've had minimal, I can count the amount of incidences that we've had, probably on, on one hand, if not two. Um, and many times, we're the ones calling because someone's unruly. And we don't accept it, we don't, we don't tolerate it. We deal with about fifty people a day. Sometimes, they have a stroke, which has happened. Yeah, we call the fire department and someone has a stroke.
We understand that, I, like I said.
So, so it's not chaos. And, and it sounds like you're getting the, the interpretation, or the community or the abutters are saying that this is a chaotic situation. It is not chaotic. You can ask the LA, uh, the Laconia PD. We have a very good working relationship with them. We handle most of our issues ourselves. And they're not, in the, the way the facility is designed and will be designed for the cold weather, is they won't be wandering the streets. They won't be wandering the neighborhood. They will be inside the facility, and if they leave, they can't come back in. That is gonna prevent them from being out in the community. And it's gonna give Laconia the master plan that they want of this beautiful lake resort. That's what drew us here. We, we, we started coming as summer, summer guests. We fell in love with Laconia. We bought four decapitated, disgusting apartment buildings that we've completely renovated and upscaled to very nice apartments to bring in that middle-income worker to help Laconia. Um, so we're all for making Laconia a better situation. That's why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, well, um, do you have a question that you wanna ask them?
I do.
Okay.
I've heard this, and it's maybe I, I just didn't get it. We're talking fifteen beds, or are we talking fifteen bunk beds, thirty people?
Fifteen bunk beds, thirty people.
Fifteen bunk, thirty people, okay.
That's something I didn't understand.
Okay.
We haven't actually, like, measured it to know that they will fit. So it'll be whatever fits in there and what is ever allowed.
You're looking at it and saying, the more, more likely than not, no more than, because your, your application is a little vague in terms of numbers?
Well, that's because I don't have the specifics from the fire department.
And, and I understand that.
But it says that, that I will comply with whatever they say. But we believe that we could get fifteen bunk beds in the thousand square feet of space. We only have that section to be able to put something in, so.
And facing the building, this is the section on the right, and then the bigger section where it used to be Pittman's Freight Room, the old, um...
It's the brick building.
Yeah, okay.
That's, and it's only that, one end of it.
Used to be an antique store, I believe. Yeah, okay.
So, in closing, I would just say that, again, we're already operating there, Monday through Friday. It's working, um, it's not chaotic. It's the perfect location for a cold-weather, low-barrier shelter. The city already knows they need one. It's the, the opportunity for Laconia to step up and team up, and...
And I have one other question. You operate, uh, you feed people there Monday through Friday, as you said. And you're gonna operate, um, a place to sleep from, what is it, December to March? Okay, seven days a week. Do you plan on expanding your feeding operation on Saturdays and Sundays?
No.
No.
No, okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions, final questions to ask the, the Longvilles? About any details that you want addressed?
Should, what, well, another quick thing. Just to ask the city library how it's changed in the last three years. When we were doing our outreach prior to our building, you know where we'd go to find homeless people? The library.
No, inside hanging out all day.
All day.
All day.
Okay, well, um, thank you.
Okay.
Okay? Um, I'm gonna close a portion of the public hearing, bring it back to the board. All right? This is an opportunity for the five members of this board to discuss it. However, before we discuss it, do you have anything to say, Dean, about what your research has shown? And I'm, you know, back to the specifics of what it is, do you have any recommendations that you would make as our chief land use officer as to this location, as to any restraints, constrictions, um, conditions that you would wanna see us entertain?
We, from a staff standpoint, we have not...
From a staff point of view.
We have not gotten that far in the process.
Okay.
Um, obviously, when this goes to the planning board, then we will get into more of the nitty-gritty in terms of, uh, the fire department will make their determination on, on occupancy.
Right.
Um, and other requirements. I, I will say that, from a planning standpoint, um, it is, it is probably better to have this type of service in the core of the city than way out to the outskirts somewhere, uh, simply because that's where the clients are.
Right.
Um, and there, the other services that these folks depend on during the day, whether it be counseling or, or whatever, are generally available in the core of the city. They're not, again, they're not located to the outskirts. You know, without question, something is needed in the city. You know, I and other staff members are here on a regular basis in the evening. You know, we, we see the folks, you know, eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, that when we're leaving, uh, various meetings. I personally do not feel threatened. I have never seen, uh, any of these folks, uh, do anything that, that I would consider threatening. But I also know that, that, uh, stuff happens in the city. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not blind to it, you know?
And, yeah, I'm just asking for, you know, staff, any staff recommendations. So, um, and, um, does anyone on the board have anything? Marcia, I mean, I, I was to, you know, I'm wondering about a fence. Were you gonna go fence?
I, I just, I, I, well, that would only help with, with maybe the abutting.
Well, but we have to consider, I'm trying to think of a way to mitigate. If this were to go through, how could we mitigate the effect that we've had on some of the immediate, uh, uh, you know, consumers? I mean, we're not here to discuss need or whatever. That's been established in the planning board, like he said, is gonna go through. We're here to put conditions, possible conditions. And does anyone have anything, any, anything about asking them? We've, we've required fences lots of times on this board. Um, and that is to, um, provide some sort of a physical barrier for the Clermonts, who are, who are the direct abutters. Um, they're residential abutter. And I'm not gonna diminish anything that the Beans have to say about their commercial enterprises across the street. But I, I do wanna take into consideration. And I, I, does anyone on the board have any suggestions to that, as to whether or not?
If, if the abutter thinks a fence would be helpful, then I certainly would add it as a stipulation.
Okay. Anyone else have an opinion on a fence?
I agree with, I agree with Marcia. I mean, it would, it would probably help, and I forgot her name.
Clermont.
Um, the Clermonts, if, if there was a fence put there, perhaps it might help. But we don't know if it really will, but...
What, what keeps them from going to the end of the fence and going around to the end of the fence? Or how, how do you box in, how do you get Isaiah to pay for a whole fence around someone else's property?
No, I don't wanna fence out her property. I wanna fence on that borderline. That, that, they have a common border.
The Clermonts, there you are.
The Clermonts and this particular property have a common border. My question is, is what?
Mike is right.
Does anyone else have an opinion on whether or not fencing may be a good idea?
Yeah.
It's worth a try. I feel sorry for the Clermonts because they're in, yeah, they're right in the middle of it.
I, I, I'm not gonna disagree.
And Mr. Bean.
Uh, Jane, um...
Is it possible to ask the Clermonts what they would think would be helpful?
I mean, we, we could ask. I mean, um, Ms. Clermont, if, would you briefly, very briefly, um, our, our question is, is if we were to require, eh, them to install a fence? We have, this is not unusual that we have asked other property owners in other situations to install fencing for the abutters.
Right.
Would, would that help you at all with this? It's not gonna make your problem go away, we're aware of that.
I understand. Eh, eh, at one time, um, there was a discussion about having a fence, and, um, uh, they indicated that, um, it wasn't feasible because they didn't have the, the means to be able to afford, because they'd have to do a survey and those types of things.
Well, um...
Can I just, can I just preface this by saying a couple of things? And, and I thank you for your time. My biggest concern, and, and I guess that's the biggest point that I have to make to you this evening, is that they say that they're open from nine to two. When they leave at two o'clock, people are still lingering, unsupervised. Even before then, they, when they originally opened up, I mean, I went over, I greeted them. I, I was open to the idea. I said that the only thing I hoped was that the people that were coming there for their services would be respectful of my properties. That's all I asked. They used to leave the side door unlocked. They actually gave them the code to be able to go into a side door where they have lockers and things. People were there all hours of the night. I brought it to their attention. They addressed it. I was very happy with that. They had a person...
I don't mean to cut you off.
I know.
My question is, is would a fence help?
A, a fence would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
But as you pointed out, it's gonna go down.
Um, I, I understand that, I'm just, the simple question that...
My biggest concern is the supervision.
Okay, and that actually...
And I haven't heard from this hearing, I haven't heard them say how it was gonna be supervised. And when you say, if they leave at nine o'clock, where do you seriously think they're going to leave to?
Okay.
Do you think they're gonna leave the property?
And that, I, that is, eh, you know, like I said, my question to you specifically right now was, should, if, if we were to require a fence, would that help with you?
It's a help.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think it's the answer to it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything they wanna say about this, other than the general need? I mean, about this location, this time, this purpose? It's kinda what we're here for, this special exception. The other thing is, is I don't know, can we, we can't condition it on incidents, can we? Or is that something the planning board has to do? That's a technical question, Dean.
I would say you could make a recommendation the planning board look at, fencing requirements.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else on this board have anything they wanna say about this?
I just have one thing to say.
Yes, roll.
When I read this petition, this, uh, recommendation, I looked at the location, two doors down from the police department. How, how much better can you have for a location for an activity such as this? If there's any trouble, the cops, the cops can be here in two minutes. I, uh, I just thought that that was ideal, and I still do.
Okay. Mike? Marcia? Jane?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept application number two oh two one dash zero zero five seven relative to one hundred New Salem Street, Laconia, New Hampshire. Isaiah sixty-one Cafe, and they're looking for relief or special exception from Article five, two thirty-five, twenty-six. or special exception from Article 5, 235, 26. To be able to provide some sort of low barrier cold weather shelter would be something that is obviously a need here in Laconia. The Long Vales have already been dealing with meeting their people and feeding them. Once again, its proximity to the police station can be of value to early response for any problems. I would, if I could submit the proposal as they wrote it, supporting their request.
So the tenants as stated.
Okay.
As stated. And with the condition of fencing between Isaiah and the shelter and the abutting neighbor, sorry. Then that would be a recommendation that I would put forward to planning. And also, planning predicate some of this with some sort of boundary for an overage of response, either through fire or through the police. There should be some sort of level that would be reasonable.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a, the motion is basically to accept this application with two, two conditions that we recommend that the planning board look strongly at fencing to, for the property. And that they look into the feasibility of a triggering number of incidences working, because they're gonna work more closely with police and fire on this than certainly we are. Okay? That they, that they look more closely towards triggering incidences. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Marcia seconds it? All those in favor?
Aye.
I, I don't know, that's, um, does anyone? The last, that's the last item we have on the agenda that relates to anything that any public input can be given on. Our next agenda item is for a discussion and possible vote on, a vote on whether or not we're gonna grant a rehearing for something that's already happened. Okay? So if anyone wants to hang around, or if you want to give, I'm gonna just temporarily put the meeting on hiatus for a couple of minutes so everybody can-
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Um, well, yes.
Just the, the next step, so now I have to do-
You, you deal, your zoning people are gonna be in touch with you. You're gonna have to go through the pla, another additional steps on the planning process. You'll be dealing with the planning board and the planning-
I just wondered if I have to submit more, or they just use this original-
They will tell you everything. I can't answer those questions. That's what they get paid for. So they're gonna be working with you on the next step of this process, okay? That's why they get the big bucks, right, Dean? Anyway, there's a temporary pause in the meeting.
For this temporary pause, may I just say thank you? You are all-
Okay.
Very professional and wonderful. It's tough. I did ask if they would be providing that type of kind of thing. They're not.
It's always gonna be homeless.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this meeting back to order now. I just wanted to give, that's an opportunity to clear the room.
I'll remain just a, not a voting member tonight.
Okay, okay, just, just for clarification.
Okay. All right, you can still, you're not a voting member, but you can still participate in the discussion as you will, as you well aware.
That's why I came.
Okay. Uh, next on our agenda is a request for a rehearing, just to grant a rehearing. I'm gonna emphasize that a rehearing is nothing more than that. It is an opportunity to rehear the applicant, okay? It's not saying that if we were to rehear this application, that we would in fact grant or not this particular special exception, I believe. All this is, is to discuss whether or not we're gonna have a rehearing. Does anyone have anything to say about this?
Yes.
Okay, Roland?
I'm not sure on four or against this, but I, I, I'd just like to get a clarification if I could. When a person requests a rehearing, isn't it incumbent on them to provide additional evidence to-
They have given us a statement.
I've, I've read it all.
Okay.
And I don't see anything new. And that's, that's why I'm in a quandary, because I, maybe I'm wrong. Is that an issue that you would define?
It is part of the criteria. So that's why I'm asking if, you know what I mean, that, that they do that. And so you, in your opinion, what I'm hearing you say is that you didn't see anything new in what the lawyer wrote.
No.
Okay, Marcia?
Neither did I.
Okay.
I totally agree.
Mike?
No. I'm not seeing anything that I'm being presented with, and I'm not feeling that the decision was improper, especially when Mr. Del Bacchio pointed out what in particular neighborhood this was. And taking a look at it, I recognize this was probably in an opportune spot to run a business like this.
Okay. Um, the only thing that I will say as to specific answers to his request here, okay? Is that, as to number three, I do, and that goes to the issue of recusal of the chair. Well, no, I, I, I have something to say about that. There was a reason for that recusal, and that was first statements that the applicant believed. And I'm only making, I'm playing devil's advocate here because I don't have the bullets. I just want this on the record. There is a reason that that request was made. Conflict of interest is one thing. However, an unbiased jury is another, okay? And we are quasi judicial board. We are head, held to a juror's standard as opposed to one that simply is a financial interest in the outcome. Okay, does, does any, everyone understand what that means?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It just, it just means that just because you don't have a conflict of interest, you do have to have no implicit bias shown. Okay, all right, I'm just pointing that out. The other thing that I do want to point out, although he did not provide any evidence of this, and that's his bad, is that there was some testimony that was given at that night by some of the people who live on that street that was not borne out by any documentation.
They live on Morningside Drive, no?
Not those people. That was a suppositional testimony. Um, the, the statements that were made by someone who's, I believe, named in this, Dr. Haycock? I could be, is pronouncing that. She testified that hypothetically she would not be able to leave her house. Uh, when asked her, she called the police. She said she had, the police have never received a complaint about this house regarding parking. Police do do parking. That's what they do. If there was ever an instance that she couldn't leave her house, she, and testified to us that she called the police, records checks show there has never been any calls from that neighborhood to the police about this property. And those records go back to 1997.
She commented that she spoke with the police chief, if my memory serves me correctly.
Okay, well, the police chief has no record of that conversation. And that's all I'm gonna say. I do believe that these two criteria constitute what I believe should be a rehearing. Now, if every, no one else agrees with me, that's fine. I'm just mentioning this as these are the things, anything else, you're right, there's no new evidence here. Those are the only two things that I'm gonna bring up at this meeting, and I've said my piece. So if anyone has just anything to say about those two items. Do I believe that these people have been good neighbors? No, I don't.
Well, I would, wouldn't see what's going on.
Okay. However, we're not here to decide whether or not they're good neighbors. Lots of people have bad neighbors. We're here to decide whether this is, whether this is an appropriate use of this piece of property at this time within the boundaries established by our ordinance. And we didn't write the ordinance. The city council made, and I believe on those strict grounds that this does, that, that this does constitute a rehearing because of those two issues. And that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
What issues, Geller, specifically?
I just said the two issues that I, I said. I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm discounting the Morningside Drive. I, I'm not really concerned about that. I didn't, I, I'm discounting that.
Because there's no record on the police department?
Well, the police record everything, believe me. I want, I kept, I spent an entire career monitoring police departments. They record everything. There is no record of this. Secondly, and I, I challenge that there wasn't some implicit bias expressed by one of the members on this board previous to that night, a recusal was requested, and he did not recuse himself, although we had a full board here. I'm saying that I was aware of that, because I was made aware of that by staff in the event that I may have to chair the meeting, in the event that he chose either A, not to chair the meeting, or B, to step down. I'm not saying anything here that I wasn't, it's all on the record. Those are the only two items that I believe constitute a reason for a rehearing in this application. That's it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when someone calls the police department, isn't it only recorded if they actually visit the situation?
God, no.
No.
I mean, that's what-
No.
I remember from police academy for some reason.
They record everything. That's a dispatch call, and that's a diff, entirely different thing. They record everything.
You know, the object of this whole program of allowing people to rent out their houses makes me wonder why, if, if it's supposed to be a part-time basis, and it's only for people who have a personal home and want to rent it during the time that they're not using it themselves, why do you put that property under an LLC?
That would be their choice. I mean, we're not, there are a lot of LLCs in this city. A lot of people form limited liability companies. I, I can't answer that. You'd have to ask him that. It, it doesn't matter. The, the issue is, I'm only, I'm not saying that we're, this is gonna go forward for approval. I'm saying that these two things that I mentioned, suppositional testimony and the, the request for recusal constitute a need for a rehearing. Now, if we don't rehear it, these people can choose to go to court. That's their, that's their choice. And there's, any judge can say, he can do whatever he wants. We didn't pass this law. We've previously a thousand times expressed our disapproval with some of the way this law is written. I know that the planning staff is working on cleaning up some of the language as the short-term rental law goes forward. But my only thing here is specific to number three, and I don't know what the number is. Number seven. Those two things may constitute a rehearing, and that's my argument. If you don't believe it, then, you know, I, anyone else have anything to say?
Yes.
Okay?
The problem we had right from the first time, we've, we've had these people before, what, four times now?
Well, yeah.
After the first meeting, we asked that they provide the finances to show that they were actually running that business. And we said at that time, that's the only thing we needed. That's why when we came in last month, I was all prepared to vote for it.
Okay. Well, I, I'm saying, and they did-
They did what we asked them to do. It took us three meetings to do it, but they did finally give us the information we asked for.
And we do have that information. They have met the, the, the strict criteria of the ordinance as it is written. I'm not passing judgment on whether it's good law or bad law. That's not our job here. Our job here is to determine whether or not he raised any issues that would constitute us to rehear this argument. That's the only thing that we have to decide. We can all say, we give him a rehearing, and come out with the same vote next time. My issue here is that we are, we stay legally within our parameters and that we haven't committed an error. That-
Well, we turned him down primarily because of the neighbors.
And that's more-
We have specific reasons why we turned him down, and those are, are iterated here. Those were, there were two, there were two reasons why we, why this board said no.
But, you know, that is about the reason for turning him down.
I didn't say it wasn't. I'm saying his only request here is for a rehearing. Not that it be approved. That comes next, if we give him a rehearing. I'm saying he pointed out two things that were procedurally possibly incorrect with what this board did the last time, that we may want to fix going forward if we choose to rehear this application. If not, then it's done. We can vote on it tonight, and it will, it'll go where it'll go. I don't know what they're, I don't know what they're gonna do.
What is the, the, Steve didn't recuse himself.
Right.
He felt he didn't need to.
Okay, well-
And that was, and that was, and, and the meeting went forward. I, I guess I don't understand why that is an issue.
In fact, it was a bit more than just recusing that they wanted. They wanted him to resign his position.
They did? That's not what I heard.
They pushed pretty hard. And certainly that was probably what drew chairs higher.
Okay, well, that I don't know. All I knew is that he was asked to recuse. Not to resign, but to recuse.
Yeah.
Right, and I thought it was a bit stronger. Seriously, in this neighborhood here, I think the conclusion that we came to, after taking input from the neighborhood and coming to the conclusion that we did, and once again, anybody can also input or vote otherwise, but in the end of it, and I truly got an awareness of this from Mike, and to really look at what this was and recognize what this neighborhood was, we really did feel that we made the right decision.
Okay.
So I would vote to, I personally would vote to-
And I'll entertain a motion? If, if, I mean, is that, is that what everyone else on the board feels? Is that what I brought up as reasons to rehear it, not to approve it, to rehear it, are not, don't reach that threshold for you, then fine?
I don't feel Peter should have recused himself, because he, he's not-
Not Peter.
Steve.
I'm sorry. Yep, the other guy. He is very open. He's, he's not biased one way or the other. And he did not run the meeting that way. So he should not have had to recuse himself.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just offering one or two.
And I don't see new evidence-
Okay.
-to justify a rehear.
If they had come in the night, the first night-
Just given everything we needed.
... give us the information we asked for, and which they knew they had to give us, they would have been all set, because we would have voted for them that night.
I'll entertain a motion either way.
Motion to deny a rehearing for 33 Clearwater
Place.
Place, based on discussions that we have and lack of new or further evidence as to why it should be allowed.
Do I have a second? Marcia seconds it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, is there any other business to come before the, oh, oh, yeah.
Karen has prepared the-
Meeting schedule.
Twenty-two meeting schedule. I hate to say those words.
Oh, jeez, I know. Do we need to approve, do we need to approve that?
Read them and we-
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the, the meeting scheduled for 2022?
You already have done that. You did it in a previous meeting. That's just your undraft copy. That's like your final.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if we needed to approve that or not, okay?
No, you did it a couple of days ago.
Do we have, okay. Do we have, yeah, because I can remember back that far, right. Um, do we have any other business to come before the board tonight? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right.
Who was Roland, okay.
I will, that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.